Councilmember, can you try your audio for us?
Okay, I can hear you now. Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me now?
Hold on, Steve's coming back.
Hello?
Can we, you can hear us, I can't hear you. Can you keep talking?
Correct, I can, correct, I can hear you. I can hear you.
Okay.
I don't know if you can hear me.
We can hear you. So...
You can hear, you can hear me now?
We can hear you now, yes.
Okay, sounds like we're good. I'm gonna mute my mic.
Okay, you will not be able to see inside the chamber, but we can see you, okay?
Okay.
Here we go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Monday, August 1st, to 2022 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Lupi Mo or Moy. Please forgive me. And she's a member of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, Almighty God, hallowed be thy name. We come before thee at the beginning of our city council meeting and give thee thanks for all that we have. We have been so overly blessed with many things. Sometimes we take it for granted, but we hope that we remember our blessings. We're grateful for this opportunity to gather and to discuss matters pertaining to our city. And we ask that thy spirit be with us here, with all the speakers and all the elected officials and those that are of the city that will be united and will be the good for our city, for all the citizens and those that are less fortunate. And please bless our children. And bless everyone here this day. These favors and blessings we ask thee for in the name of thy beloved son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears, can you turn your camera on, please?
Yes, here.
Perfect. Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Steinmeier?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. Thank you. Next, we have citizen requests, and we have two people who have signed up to speak. And Lynn Baker, if you can come forward, if I can give a little bit of a preamble. You can come on up and I'll give the preamble. Please state your name and address. Please refrain from referring to any individual person. We want to make sure that we stay focused on policy issues and not politics. So tomorrow is Election Day, so let's please stay away from anything like that.
Absolutely.
Certainly, policy issues are open. So with that, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Rowland. The city charter has not been reviewed in our city since 1985. So much about our world and society has changed during these past 37 years. It is important, members of this community, observe our leaders moving our city forward. The citizens must see the council members focused on bringing our city up to date as well as being competitive with the cities around us. May we take the charter review one step at a time, voting to begin the process of reviewing the city charter rather than drawing this process out over many more months or years. In 1985, I was a counselor at Truman High School, and a graduating senior would have been 18 or thereabouts. That same student would now today be 55 years old. Therefore, that student who had been on the cusp of entering a career to begin life is now thinking about retirement. That is far too long. Now is the time to move forward on a review of the city charter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Dan O'Neil, and also, please state your name and your address. And then, you probably don't need me to go through the other rules I mentioned to you. Okay, thank you.
My name is Dan O'Neil, and I live at 2700 Coachman in Independence, Missouri. I'm here to speak in favor of establishing the Charter Review Commission. I'm a member of the Independence Chamber of Commerce, a board member of the EDC. I also am a member of a city committee called the Independence Unarole Committee. The charter sets the rules for governance of our community and should be reviewed on a regular basis, not every 30 years. Or plus or minus. I urge you to not kick the can down the road anymore. If we can trust 12 people to make the right decision in a jury, what does it matter if we have seven or nine people on this commission? The important thing is to establish the correct process for the selection of who serves on that committee. And does, does it really matter if they're X anything? Harry Truman was once asked if he thought the American people were procrastinators. He thought for a minute and he said, "Sure." They follow the example set by their political leaders. Please don't be that kind of leader. Don't put this issue off. Don't Mickey Mouse around about it. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. That's okay. We're going to have the proclamation for the Employee of the Month.
Bill number 22-786, a resolution recognizing Rachel Johnston, Administrative Assistant II for Neighborhood Services with the Community Development Department as the Employee of the Month for August 2022. And whereas the city employee recognition program recognizes outstanding performance by employees of the city of Independence, and whereas an employee committee selects the Employee of the Month for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best represent public service, and whereas the employee recognition committee has selected Rachel Johnston, Administrative Assistant II for the Neighborhood Services with the Community Development Department as Employee of the Month for August 2022.
And Rachel, you can come on up and... Okay, and can we get a motion and a second for the proclamation? Is that right?
It's a motion and second for bill number 22-786.
Okay.
I'd make the motion to approve 22-786, recognizing Rachel Johnston as Employee of the Month.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would just like to say that when there's been projects that Kim has been working on, she's brought Rachel in, and Rachel's done a great job. So, thank you, Rachel. And you thought I wouldn't mention that today. So, thank you for your help. All right. Any other discussion? No further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yeah.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any councilmembers wish to pull any items for discussion? Any members?
Here.
Go ahead.
Pull number nine, please.
Number nine, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any other items to be pulled? Okay. So, everything minus item nine. Okay. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fears?
Yeah.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. All right, item number one, nine, has been pulled out. Councilmember, proceed.
Um, so I guess first I need to make a motion to approve it, so we can have discussion.
Let's second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and approval, and you would like to have some time to discuss if I'm hearing you correctly.
Yes, I just have a question really, facing manager, I think, and that really is... I reviewed this, and I'm just curious what the security company is providing security for. I looked through all the material, saw lots of great qualifications and lots of good information about the people providing the service and the company, but I couldn't find anywhere that it said where they were providing service or what level of service they're providing. And I just would like a little clarification on that, please.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Fears and members of the council. The contract before you provides onsite security at the Independence Utility Center. A number of public-facing functions there, most notably the customer utility bill pay center where people can make those payments in person. Because of the large number of cash transactions on hand there, just as well as the, you know, the number of citizens and business owners that we interface with there, it's been practiced to have onsite security present, hopefully not needed, but there if needed.
Okay, thank you. I just, I could say I wasn't clear on what we were providing security for, so that's very helpful. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Mr. City Manager, is this armed or unarmed security?
Pardon, I'm sorry.
Is it armed or unarmed security?
Not armed.
Not armed. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Further discussion? All right, no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yeah.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this brings us to public hearings, and this opens the first public hearing.
A public hearing for the formation of the Eastgate Commerce Center Community Improvement District. Full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tom Scannell, the Community Development Director. North Point Development, the developer of the Eastgate Commerce Center has submitted a petition to establish the Eastgate Commerce Center Community Improvement District. This CID or Community Improvement District will encompass the 1,200-plus acre Eastgate Commerce Center development as well as the associated public right-of-way. The petition consists of imposing a one-cent sales tax within the district as well as imposing a special assessment in the amount of five cents per square foot on all constructed and occupied buildings within the district. This CID petition meets the state statutes. And that concludes staff's presentation. We do have the applicant here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So essentially, what we're trying to accomplish with this CID and what we're requesting is the ability to tax ourselves to fund public improvements. So this tax will be generated via two vehicles. One-cent sales tax on any point-of-sale user that we get within our development. So similar to the Chewy facility that we have in Belton, any, any sales generated by that facility are subject to sales tax. And so in this situation, 1% of that would be used to fund this Community Improvement District. In addition to that, we do have a special assessment of five cents a square foot that would be imposed on any building that we build throughout this improvement district. And again, these funds would essentially be pooled to fund maintenance and fund additional public improvements in the area of the CID. And available for any questions, Jeff.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, when you say public improvements, can you give me an example?
Yeah, so essentially, things like intersection improvements, water main improvements, power line extensions, substation improvements that the city has been eyeing. So I guess for, it's not just to help, you know. It's a joint effort between us and the city to fund improvements in the area.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I have a question. And this, this may be private information. How much is the CID, is there a CID in Belton on that Chewy or for your development in Belton? And what kind of revenue does it generate, if you can share it?
Yeah, I just couldn't share it for lack of my own personal knowledge on the Belton specifics for the CID.
Fair enough.
But my question is, from your perspective, we could probably contact Belton and they could share that information.
That seems reasonable.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to come forward to speak in favor or oppose to the CID? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 22-059, an ordinance approving the petition for the establishment of the Eastgate Commerce Center Community Improvement District, establishing the district, making findings and authorizing actions related to establishment of the district.
This opens the second public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
A public hearing for the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code, relating to special use permits for mini-storage. Full public hearing.
Go ahead and open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tom Scannell, Community Development Director. This amendment seeks to change the UDO in regards to self-storage facilities. The current UDO allows these self-storage facilities in the C3 and I1 districts. This amendment will make distinctions between outdoor versus indoor self-storage facilities, update the terminology, and implement new minimum standards for both indoor and outdoor self-storage facilities. This application was reviewed by the Plan Commission on June 28th. The Plan Commission recommended approval of this amendment. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Proceed.
Mr. Scannell, is this just filling a hole in our UDO? Or is it?
Yes, it is. Currently, the, since the UDO makes no distinction between indoor versus outdoor self-storage facilities, all of them are lumped into one, one category, which requires, as we've had a few over the last few years, where they have to rezone the property from C2 to C3 or I1 in order for, whether it's an indoor or an outdoor, to locate there. This would allow an indoor self-storage facility to locate in the C2 with approval of a special use permit. That does a couple things in that rezoning the property to C3 for the self-storage may be a good idea at the time, but in the future, if that business goes out, you could be creating some unintended consequences. Thus, adding the special use, if that use does go out, that C2 zoning is still there. So it does preserve that commercial zoning district.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? On this public hearing? Seeing none, this closes the public hearing.
Bill number...
Oh, sorry.
Bill number 22-070, an ordinance admitting the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code pertaining to mini-storage facilities. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on this bill? Seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yeah.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this takes us to non-ordinance action items. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 22-771, a resolution affirming the city council's adherence to certain provisions of the city's personnel policies and procedures, as well as certain administrative policies of the city of Independence.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
Okay. So some people, and maybe even some on this city council, might think that I'm trying to stop this resolution because I'm trying to hold on to some perceived power. That cannot be farther from the truth, and after some behavior I have personally seen recently, I want this very much to pass. So let me be clear. Members of this city council should be held accountable for bad behavior if it occurs. This includes sexual harassment, workplace violence, and intimidation. In my opinion, though, this resolution is flawed and most is unenforceable under the charter. Mr. Mayor, I realize this is something you campaigned on. I know it's something that you really want to see passed. So I'm asking you and the rest of the members to postpone this for 30 days our next, our first city council meeting in September. Some of the changes I would like to be, say, see changed. Any complaint against a council member would go, be investigated by an outside entity. If discipline were to occur, list out what discipline could happen in the resolution. How many members must vote in an affirmative on the city council for discipline to occur? And finally, I think there's a lot of stuff in this resolution that aren't really necessary for us. So let's take them out and focus on what is important, be it in sexual harassment, workplace violence, and intimidation. And that's all I have. And then I'll make a motion to postpone this to for 30 days or our next first city council meeting in September.
Okay. So I'm hearing you say you want to, you're making a motion, postpone it for 30 days or the first city council meeting in September?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion on that? And anybody else? Other discussion? Councilmember, you and I talked about this. I'm in agreement with your perspective on it. I appreciate you reaching out to me and saying, hey, let's find a solution for this. And I'm happy to oblige that, and I'd be happy to vote in favor of postponing this till the first meeting in September.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yeah.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Thank you. This...
Bill number 22-765, a resolution created a Charter Review Commission for the city of Independence, Missouri, to consist of nine members to be appointed by the city council, defining the purposes and duties of said commission and the objectives sought to be accomplished, and further providing for the organization and plan of operation for said commission.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So I'm, I'm fine with everything in this. As an ordinance of resolution, anyway, I'm fine with everything in this, except for the fact that, as I stated previously, that we're excluding former city employees and that we're excluding former city council members and mayors. You know, these people, I mean, a lot of them still live in the city. They pay taxes here. They vote here. And I know you don't like to get political, but a lot of people on this dais, when we're up for election, we go to the retirees and we ask for their endorsement. But then, we're going to exclude them from this commission? Something doesn't seem right about that. So I'm going to make a motion to amend this. So after it basically says, "Because it's imperative the commission is able to be detached, objective, and impartial, any former Independence mayor, city council member, or city of Independence employee shall be ineligible to serve on the commission." And the amendment will be, "Until such time that this person has been separated from the city for a minimum of 24 months."
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? I'll just repeat my idea on this, that I truly want this to be a citizens' commission. It will be open hearings. There'll be lots of discussion points. You'll be able to have access to everyone who's on the commission, and you'll have access to everyone, the city council members here, if there's something of major concern. We will have tremendous amount of input, just like we've had to this process. I think we've had a number of things on this process. But anyway, I want it to truly be a citizens' commission. With that being said, any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Hello?
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
No. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion in front of us?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So I believe that the former employees and any mayor or former mayor of the city council are citizens. So if we're going to exclude them, maybe there's some other people we should exclude. Maybe we should exclude anybody currently on, that sits on a committee. Maybe we should exclude, you know, I don't know, anybody that's active on social media that, you know, comments on city politics. Maybe we should exclude our public speakers tonight. So, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Is that a motion or just a comment?
Just comments.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Please proceed.
Well, I agree with Councilmember Stewart.
While I agree with Councilmember Stewart, I'm also still at a loss why we can't wait three more months to have an election, have our seventh councilperson seated, and let them participate in the decision-making of who will sit on there. So, I would still like to see that happen if we could make a serious consideration for whoever is elected in the general to participate.
And you mean participate in selecting the committee members?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else for discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres.
Yeah.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
No.
Steinmeier.
No.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. The motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to... Okay, this brings us to second readings. Okay, thank you.
Bill number 22-066, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $698,000 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for the police department for impaired driving enforcement and youth alcohol liquor compliance checks from October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023, authorizing future change orders and/or time extensions for the same project and making the necessary appropriations, second and final reading.
Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres.
Yeah.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Bill number 22-067, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $347,000 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for the police department for a crash investigation software license, LET SAC conference fees, and hazardous moving violations enforcement from October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, and addendums for additional funding for the same project and making the necessary appropriations, second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres.
Yeah.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Bill number 22-068, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $73,000 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for the police department for occupant protection enforcement from October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project and making the necessary appropriations, second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres.
Yeah.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Bill number 22-069, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $62,230 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of product support, program development fees, computer software and equipment for the police department for e-ticketing from October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project and making the necessary appropriations, second and final reading.
Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres.
Yeah.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Okay, and that brings us to first readings, if I'm correct. Please proceed.
Bill number 22-072, an ordinance vacating and changing an existing right-of-way to a general utility easement, all that part of Old Lexington Road, from the east right-of-way line of North Bay Avenue and the westerly right-of-way line of US 24 Highway in the southeast quarter, section 20, Township 50, Range 31, City of Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Bill number 22-073, an ordinance redistricting the City of Independence for the city council district, repealing ordinance number 15219 and all other ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith. Bill number 22-074, an ordinance to approve amendments to the electric service rules and regulations. Bill number 22-075, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C1 Neighborhood Commercial and District R6 Single Family Residential to District R18 PUD Moderate Density Residential Planning and Development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the properties at 2610 and 2612 South Lee Summit Road in Independence, Missouri.
And that opens, Councilmember comments. Do you want to have any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Proceed.
So, I've been still hearing a lot in various sources getting contacted about the police overtime report, and I've said publicly that if it's possible without, you know, giving too much personnel information or giving any personnel information, I'd like to see it be released publicly. So, I would like to see a special meeting called to specifically discuss it, including maybe the Dan Nelson in that meeting, to see if it's possible to release, really release some of it publicly. Second, as I usually say, we do have an election tomorrow, very important one. We have city council positions on the ballot, we have county, we have, we have state, so please get informed and get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Anybody else? Do you have anything?
Mr...
Proceed.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things, if I can remember them both. First was Wes Epperson, a gentleman in the 4th District, has organized a monthly meeting for folks in the 4th District, and it's a good place. He's been bringing in folks from the city to talk about, the last meeting I missed, but he talked about the 353 program for redevelopment, and he talked about, they had folks there from codes come almost all the time, and sometimes representatives from the police department. So, anybody that's in the 4th District that would like to be involved in those meetings, feel free to get ahold of me. I'll pass you along to Wes. It's not my thing, it's Wes Epperson's thing, but it's really a neighborhood and community thing for 4th District folks. So, just for anybody that's out there that would like to be involved. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. I just want to say a couple of things. Last Friday, the folks from Bingham Wagner were kind enough to invite a number of us to go to the Bingham Wagner, and it was just a great tour. I highly, highly, highly encourage you to go there. The most remarkable thing that I saw there was not a thing. It was Ben who does the tours, and he's a tour guide. He's been working there at the ripe old age. You know, you're going to find this hard, but Ben's been there, he started there as a volunteer at the age of 12. He's now 15, and he's extraordinary. And it is well worth the trip to go to Bingham Wagner to see that and to, to do that. And also, over the weekend, my wife and I found a stray. We took it to the animal shelter. They are completely overwhelmed. Please go, if you can, and bring a puppy home to their forever home. I cannot encourage you enough to do that. So, with that being said, any other things else? All right. We are adjourned.